Most of us are here, except for Millie, who is excused for a special event that she had earlier in the evening and not able to get back. We'll go around and just say who's here. Please start, Kate.
Kate Bradshaw.
Chris Simonsen.
Ken Boney Harris.
Randy Lewis.
Richard Higginson.
Thank you. We also welcome all those who are in attendance observing what we're doing, or maybe here in preparatory to our regular session. So this is the work session. And we're going to turn time right over to Gary for discussion with Davis County School District.
Thanks, Mayor.
We love this school district, by the way, so we're really glad that you're here.
Yeah, we're going to invite our school district reps to come on up, if you don't mind. You guys get to pick if it's one, two, or three.
Well, you know, I'd love to have everybody.
They're way too far away. It's hard to yell at them at this distance.
But let me just start by saying, boy, I can't remember, Craig, how long ago it was that I got a phone call about the school looking at closing Washington Elementary and wondering whether or not Bountiful was going to be interested. That is the school policy to turn to their, as I recall at least, practice, to turn to neighbors to see if we have an interest in preserving the space. Seems like it was a long time ago that we started this conversation, and it's great to be at this point. I appreciate Craig and have appreciated his candor through the process, which could be delicate at times, but have felt like the conversations we've had have been in very good faith about the needs of the city and the needs of the school district. But grateful for the opportunity that they are here tonight to answer some of the questions that you all raised with us as staff about the use agreement. And from my perspective, I feel like we're pretty close on, I think, some common points. But I think a lot of that depends upon you and how you feel about the shared use and the appropriateness of it and the intensity of it. The school district, and I apologize, Dan, for not getting that to you earlier than today, but I got the questions back to you guys that the council had asked. And so I think they're prepared to answer some of the questions. Those are in your staff report on page three, council, along with what we've outlined so far as some talking points of the page two. So with that, I might, maybe we can have just a minute to let them introduce themselves.
Some introductions here for everyone?
Yeah, because we have a couple of our former principals in Bountiful here, in addition to Craig Carter. And so, Dan, maybe you can introduce yourself, and Rick, and then we'll go from there.
Sure, yeah. Do I need to push the button here? Am I okay?
You're good. You're green.
Great. My name's Dan Lindford. I'm a secondary director for Davis School District. Mayor, Davis School District loves Bountiful, so that's right back at you. I spent 17 years at Beaumont, and, you know, my last five there as the principal of Yuma High School. So I feel like I'm kind of an adopted Bountiful native to a degree. Spent my young years as a young teacher, all the way up through, you know, just five years ago. And then, Rick, and let me say something about Craig. I'm not going to give him the mic, because he'll just take over the meeting. But we appreciate Craig Carter. He's our, of course, our business administrator and assistant superintendent, but he's the guy that gives a lot of wisdom and keeps everybody calm. So we appreciate his influence and direction.
Rick Aslam, and also a director, secondary director with the district. I spent 15 years at Bountiful High, where I met Kate, actually. So it's just great to be back and loved Bountiful.
Can you clarify, it wasn't because I was in your office? Wasn't in trouble?
Kate had family members in my office, but Kate never came to my office, that I recall.
That would be an accuracy.
Thank you for being here. Thanks for the invitation.
Good. Thanks, Rick.
So maybe if we could start, I think one of the first questions is, if you could help us understand, you know, what agreements do you have in place with, you know, non-governmental entities? We have an interlocal agreement that we're familiar with, but some of the club sports and things like that, what are the nature of those agreements? Do they run more than one year? And what is the process now for reserving fields, not for the city, but for a club that might want to play? Because that's one of the big issues, is providing field space for some of the resident groups and clubs that want to play in Bountiful. So if you don't mind.
Yeah, let me jump into that, and Rick and Craig can jump in as well. But the agreements we have, and that comes from a good place, honestly, that question. And historically, that probably had greater significance than it has over the last five or so years. When I was the principal of Yuma High School, and well before that, maybe decades before that, we did have an agreement with a group, what was originally Rush Soccer, that predates any of our time in the district, and then became Forza. It was a soccer club. In fact, the director of Forza was actually the Yuma High School. I hired him to be our soccer coach. I won a state championship under him, and now he's the director of Utah Soccer. So he's kind of the big wheel within the state. During that time, Forza had this exclusive agreement that they had, they, to a degree, they had, they placed themselves before even the cities. The contract was for time immemorial, you know, forever. And it was actually, it was, it appeared to me that it was written by a manual typewriter. It was old. And when we looked at that, and when they changed their names, we renewed it many years ago. And then, I think about five years ago, we went to Forza and said, "We can no longer abide by this contract." And we basically said, you know, "We understand, we are breaking the contract as it was written, but we cannot abide by that." And they were great. They worked with us and agreed to dissolve that contract. So from this point forward, or from that point forward, really, they don't have any more right to our fields than anybody else in the public sector. So the way it goes is, at least our high schools, we start with the high schools, they schedule their own fields. High schools have the craziest schedules, as you can imagine, with all the clubs and activities and arts and athletics. And after high schools schedule their events, it's turned over to junior highs and then elementaries to schedule the buildings. And then, mid to late summer, it's just completely open after we give it to the cities. So cities have, they're in line right after the schools. And then, general rentals. And that's where, you know, professional, you know, commercial enterprises, like most of our soccer clubs, although they're nonprofit, they're organized, and they line up very quickly to get those open spots, because of course, they need to plan their seasons out as well. Most of those clubs will take elementary fields that are by and large meant for recess and are not in the best condition. They're used all day, every day, by elementary kids running around there. And of course, neighborhoods, they're typically centered in neighborhoods where they get a lot of just walk-on use from neighborhoods. And that's where we see most of our practices, myself as a little rec soccer coach, that's where we practiced at the local elementaries. And, yeah, I think that about covers it. Our process for reserving the field for anybody outside of the school system or the city is just through our normal rental site on our district website.
And that happens annually? Is that right?
Yes, and throughout the year. Once we've locked in our dates, it's just open. And sometimes, you know, they shift. Of course, we have to be flexible with some of the things that happen with our fields, particularly in the spring, it gets tough when we're rescheduling primarily baseball and softball and some of those things. And we're renegotiating kind of access to those facilities. And different, various municipalities, we've had to, you know, go back to the table and say, "Hey, you know, there was some oversight here. Can we give and take?" And we try to have a good relationship. I'll tell you, this last year with another city, I just plod out to all their high school, "No, the city had those dates. Those are important dates for the city, and we're going to have to find another place ourselves." That's the way we choose to operate. We feel like it's really critical, because we also recognize that every kid, and we're talking about Beaumont and Bountiful, which luckily, we were the principals, just by happen chance. Beaumont and Bountiful, they're going to serve your citizens. You know, they're the people that are on these fields, or the people that are from this community, and we feel like they're your kids and they're our kids. And this is a great opportunity to kind of create the space.
So council, do you want to just go through the questions as they're outlined, or do you want to just turn the time over to you for questions? How would you like to kind of proceed?
Can I just ask a quick question, Dan?
Yeah.
You mentioned that when it comes to scheduling, district first, correct?
Correct.
Then city through Brock second?
Yeah, generally speaking. So when I say city, obviously, we have, how many cities do we have within the district?
Within our city, and just like about Bountiful City.
Yeah, Bountiful City, yeah. Bountiful City would have, most of the reservations that happen for Bountiful City happen through South Davis Rec. I mean, the lion's share of those things happen through your relationship with South Davis Rec. So they're on, they're kind of the first group in this area that schedules out the fields, the gyms, you know, all of those kinds of spaces. They have, you know, South Davis Rec has the largest junior jazz basketball program in the state, and they take the gym space probably first and foremost. But yeah, all the fields are, in this area, pretty much taken by Bountiful.
Gary, if I could suggest, I would suggest, so we can get through more questions, that we just go through the questions first in the council. I would think that it would be good to have questions more towards the end, so that otherwise we're going to have such long answers. We're not going, I'm not, because you do long answers, but just because, if not, we're not going to get through that many questions.
Okay.
That's okay with the council?
So I think you've answered those. There aren't any contracts anymore that span multiple years with anybody of any kind. I think a big question is, tell us a little bit about the capacity that you feel like you have for fields now, especially in the spring. You know, we talked about that when we met, the three of us, with Brock and with Lloyd, but can you kind of share your feelings on, you know, just really, how impacted are you? How busy is your spring? And what is it that's taking space? Along with that, do the high schools have any capacity on their football fields for spring sports? How does, how do you see that?
Well, and either one of you is welcome to jump in, please, but I'll tell you, part of our challenge in Bountiful is our two by far most landlocked schools are in Bountiful City, Beaumont and Bountiful High School. They both have less acreage than we prefer for a high school. What are we, like, 50 acres or something for a high school? They're about 20. They're well short of what we plan when we, these days. We're, you know, we have a plan, a long-distance plan to create artificial turf at Bountiful, but there's some infrastructure things, lights and other things that we need to work on there. So it's a much bigger project than Beaumont. Yeah, we're, because those schools are landlocked, it's a particular issue in Bountiful. And when we found out that Washington L was reducing in population, we were going to potentially close that, that's when some of the directors pitched the idea of using that for field space for the district. And we took that through our facilities management group and began the discussion, because we're relatively desperate. We've had to condemn some fields, some we've brought back since that time, because we typically shut them down for a year. In some cases, it's taken as many as three years to just regrow healthy grass. So because the school use is so high, particularly in the elementary and even junior highs to a degree, those are tough fields to have as a varsity playing field that our teams can be proud of inviting. You know, more people come into a community like this for those kinds of events than almost any other thing that you host here, I would imagine, that you probably don't, a couple times a week, bring in thousands of fans to watch an event. And that's what our high schools are. We do like to put our best foot forward on those varsity fields, and there is, you know, there is an expectation to there.
Just to answer the question on how many, we have in the spring, we have boys and girls lacrosse starting this year. We have boys soccer. We have boys and girls track. We have tennis, like.
Softball.
Softball, baseball. And the problem we have for, like, the football fields is that we have track going there. Can't really hold a lacrosse game throwing those balls around during track time. We do play some of our soccer games later in the evenings on those fields. But like I say, with Bountiful and Beaumont, every one of those programs like soccer are off-campus. Mill Creek for Bountiful and Centerville for Beaumont. And so we really don't have space for lacrosse, which is, you know, open and starting this spring.
So by far, our most crowded sport season anyway, we just added two major varsity sports that are about the size of soccer, and JV programs that are associated with those.
Any follow-up questions on that item?
I'd love to ask a couple of follow-ups on that, if that's possible. So one of my concerns is that potentially, that's eight teams for both Bountiful and Beaumont. And I have love for both Bountiful and Beaumont, being an alumni at Bountiful High, but having a spouse that teaches at Beaumont. But that's kind of a lot to run through the daylight hours of spring until the days get longer, after-school hours before it gets dark. It's also a time when the fields will be soggy and get torn up by cleats easier. And we don't have super great access through those neighborhoods. And as Mr. Astle knows, I was once a teenage driver of Bountiful, and so I have some concerns about eight teams of kids driving through that neighborhood with not a great straightforward street access. So what are your thoughts on how we would handle eight teams on that space, knowing that our residents also have some broader wishes perhaps for that space?
Sure. Let me take a shot at that. In a nutshell, we have the same concerns you two, with regards to making sure the fields stay in playable condition. That's the great thing about a school owning the field and feeling a team saying, "That's our varsity field." You look at our varsity fields, when they're our fields, they're pretty pristine. We do a good job. When we share them with even our own schools, and we can't control what happens all day long in PE classes and other things, it gets more complicated. But from our side of things, our coaches tend to, in fact, it's a real headache for principals, I'll be honest. Those coaches love those fields, and they care for those fields, and they protect those fields. That's the way we see it. Definitely, it's a challenge. We haven't done this before. I mean, that's the straight answer. We haven't had, ideally, we would have one field for each school. It would kind of be designated, and then maybe rotate between, if there are three fields, if that's what ends up happening, two schools rotating between three fields. We do anticipate some games under the lights on our turf fields in the evening. We do anticipate, obviously, there are a lot of away games, and, you know, we're talking about 50% of the time, they'd be on those fields. But yeah, we agree, we're going to have to be careful about those, as we are with our own varsity fields.
Traffic could be an issue, Kate. I mean, seriously, we understand that. But you know, when we have four teams that would be there, they would be coming at different times to practice, obviously. So we wouldn't expect them all to be there probably at the same time during that period of time in the evening. So there'd be some deal. Field, it could be, there could be some issues with fields with some damage. There really, there's no secret about that. I know around, with lacrosse, we see right in front of their little goal there, that area gets worn, you know? Like with our soccer programs, which we've had in the past, we've encouraged our coaches on practice days to move the goals in different spots, so that we, because if you don't, there will be wear and tear. And just, let's be honest, you know, we have a problem with that. But, you know, we, our plan would be to do our job in making sure those fields are taken care of the best we can, and then if something needs to be, you know, fixed at the end of the season, we feel that we'd have to be part of that.
Have you explored, you talk about these as varsity fields, and I'm, you know, familiar with the great work that's been done at Mill Creek Junior High for Wigan Field. Have you explored having perhaps only the varsity teams at this park and the JV teams somewhere else? I also, so you can answer this at the same time, if you have Beaumont and Bountiful practicing right next to each other, and they're in the same region, like, what are the chances they're going to be, like, spying on each other and their best players and their plays and things like that, too? I mean, it's odd to have two competing high schools practice potentially their varsity teams right next to each other.
Yeah, we agree with all those concerns. I think those are all things that we would need to manage from the site. I think, again, it's important to, from my perspective, think about if, say, Beaumont and Bountiful High, these teams that are going to take great pride and ownership of these fields, if they're not playing on those fields, our club lacrosse team's going to just basically fill that void? Our soccer teams, club soccer teams, that maybe have less ownership and less commitment to repair? My sense is that if we're not there, the void will be filled by other groups. And these are, you know, in the same vein, groups of Bountiful High students and Yuma High students, Bountiful citizens. So I do think regardless, some of these, some of these concerns about the field, you know, we're going to have to address, no matter who's using the field. And if we get in line and go through a normal process and we reserve your fields for our practices, no matter how it's done, I think we've got to have a good plan to make sure the fields don't get, and I worry about those Bountiful High kids, I'm not kidding. I hope they don't come over and hurt those Beaumont kids. There's still some of their good plays. That'll be a challenge.
That's time to battle for Bountiful kids.
No, I agree. You know, those are some different things that we're going to have to really address, and coaches will have to make sure. Hopefully, it'll become a great partnership, and, you know, especially as these are budding programs, we hope that, you know, we do still firm each other and have a lot of success. Like our other athletics, we're, Davis District, our schools do a great job. I hope they do still firm each other a little bit.
I think to your point, I think it is possible that we could, you know, swap, switch, you know, who plays on that field and who doesn't play on that field. So it's possible, maybe a JV game could be held somewhere else and reserve that for a more, you know, high-level competition, varsity.
I think initially, the challenge is going to be numbers, and we may have a lot of the kids that play JV will also be on the varsity, in the varsity game. But those are, you know, those are good thoughts, that we're going to have to be really serious about how we care for these fields, whether they're, you know, whether we're renting and reserving from you, or whether we have an interlocal that kind of, you know, marks that out.
Have other sports moved into that north field at Mill Creek Junior High where they used to practice lacrosse?
I'm less familiar with that space, but yeah, I think, I think the, we're talking about the, there's the field by the road, and we're talking about the field just north of the field that you see from the road. No, I think that's primarily been a practice space.
I'm not familiar, I'm not sure.
So for all the years my sons were playing soccer at Bountiful, that space was used for lacrosse practice, for whatever team their friends were playing lacrosse on. So I don't know if that space is being used. Does a district have any plans to maybe replace some of the soccer goals that were taken out a few years ago? Or are those gone forever?
I'm not, I'm not familiar with soccer goals, do you know?
Soccer goals at Mill Creek?
No, there used to be permanent soccer goals at a number of the schools around town. And about the time that Forza came in heavy with recontracting or something, they were removed, and only those clubs that had their own goals and could travel with them then had access to the fields.
The permanent goals, and I think you'll see that, you know, across schools around the state, even around the country, the permanent goals guarantee the crease or the area in front of the goal will always be mud, you know, will always be, always need to be regrown, and always need to be fast or whatever. So, yeah, I don't think we would ever go to a permanent goal again. That probably changed just before Mark Heard took over our fields. I don't know that, I mean, because Forza, Forza had an impact primarily in the north Bountiful, Centerville area, but all the other clubs that were operating, you know, really, they don't, they didn't have an impact on our decision to remove the permanent goals. That was a measure to make sure we could, like Rick said, move them around even at practice time, so we're not wearing holes in the grass.
Can I ask a question? What percentage of the field use would be dictated by the district?
Washington L?
Yes, Washington L, yes.
Well, we wouldn't dictate any of it, but what we would do is, hopefully through an interlocal agreement, identify when we have access to the field. Apart from that, it's the cities.
And the proposal, the proposal was Monday through Thursday?
Friday.
Monday through Friday? Monday through Friday, in the spring, after school.
So Chris, it's four months of the year from after school until dark?
Five days of the week on two.
Five days a week.
On two of three fields. So there would be three fields they would use to, a third that entire time would be available for city use. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. Thank you for clarifying.
And for clarification, and it's not a large difference, but we're probably talking more like the latter half of February through the latter half of May.
And we talked a little bit about in our meeting, but I'm assuming that the district would be comfortable if we came up with standards by which, based on field conditions, you or the city could say, "Look, we can't have play on the field at this time." Is that correct?
Yeah, I think so. And again, we're, we have challenges, because we, we're members of an association, you know? And we face fines and different things if we can't, if we can't play the game that's scheduled. Historically, baseball and softball is built in a lot of flexibility for that, but it's, but those are typically fields the school has on-site, and we have a lot of control over that, and we can re-up. You know, it's not uncommon to have, you know, a triple header on a Saturday to make up for lost games in baseball. This would be a little bit different deal, and I think we'd have to manage that. I can say, in other cities where we have our varsity field that's in the city complex, those cities have been very aggressive with every group, but except us. Only, for example, in Kaysville, in the Angel Park area, I've seen massive tournaments just canceled because it rains, but I haven't seen a Davis High game canceled. That said, I think we're completely open to that. You know, we need to be, we need to be agile with that. This is a new, these are new sports. These are, you know, this is kind of a new paradigm for us, and we knew it was going to be an extraordinarily big task to find playing space for these, for these kids.
I think Brock could even weigh in on this a little bit, but, so correct me if I'm wrong, Brock, but I think the damage that we've seen to our fields have been by groups that don't necessarily have any ownership for them. They're trying to find a place to practice, they can't find another place, and so they'll show up and play on our fields when they shouldn't. I think that was the situation with some of the soccer groups that kind of destroyed Foss Lewis. And so they're kind of the squatter groups. It's not, it's not, that's the problem.
And again, I think it's important to keep in mind that our sense is that the space will be filled by somebody in one form or another. And we're talking about two of the fields, and it is, it is a good portion of the year. We recognize that. But our sense is, during that same portion, Bountiful citizens, in the same way, would be using those fields.
That's a good point. And probably with, in my opinion, probably with less ownership of the field to take care of them than the district would take care of them, so.
lest our grilling of you gentlemen seems adversarial or harsh, I just want to tell you that we're really grateful for the opportunity to partner with you on this. We recognize that the district has given us concessions on the acquisition of the property and good terms on your side going forward, and we appreciate that. It's going to be a real blessing to the city and to the people that live and play here. But, you know, the questions have had some concern because of the fact that we do represent those people in a different capacity than you, and we want to make sure that our interests are there as well.
Yeah, I can tell you, we feel 100% respected, and it's been a great conversation, and we absolutely understand where some of these concerns come from. And some of, there's history there that we, we scratch our heads over it as well. So absolutely, we love Bountiful City, I mean that.
Yeah, we feel, we do. Gary's been wonderful to work with. We've met with him a couple of times, and very respectful, and it's been a great relationship, and we appreciate it. You know, we're You know, we're from the cities as well because we need you. We really do.
Well, I think this cooperation between us and having the, the agreements that we, we, we all, that become our standards really by, by which we, we, we go forward allows others not to kind of use one against the other in how they are, or hey, this is the district's problem, or this is the, this is, we work together to, to accomplish this. And I, I really like that. Thank you for that.
So counsel, I guess, to move this kind of conversation forward, because I think we're all anxious to, to get something going that will work for everybody so we can move forward with our plans to, to design the property. About, put in the staff report sort of what we had talked about is our, our basic starting point, or our basic discussion points or deal points. And I, I put it, I put it to these gentlemen this way. I said, really, what is the minimum amount of use that you could live with? And, and this is what we've come up with. And I, I think if that's fair, I, I feel like you've been raked over the coals by me as well before this, but just appreciate the candor that, that you've shared with us. If there, I'm, I'm wondering with the, on page three here, if there are concerns about, about this use that we need to maybe refine more? Or if this works for you for the basis of a, of an interlocal agreement that we can, we can fine tune and bring back? Just love to hear your thoughts about this.
I think this is a good basis, and I'm, the interlocal agreement, what would be the timeframe then?
I, I would say, you know, if we're comfortable with these, with these deal points, we could have a draft for you within a month. And I don't know what the school district's timeframe would be looking at something like that, but the board would, but I think we could have a draft easily within, within a month for you to consider and adopt, for adoption.
And then would the agreement itself be for like an annual agreement? Or would it be, is that what you're envisioning?
Also, good question. You know, the original draft we got was a 10-year agreement. I, I don't know what your thoughts are about a term if.
Well, I think it's important for us to have some predictability as we're making a decision about the sale.
And, yeah.
The reason we put it 10, that's typically what we have with most of our cities when we have these shared use agreements is it's a 10-year term. You know, we would probably not prefer an annual contract, but if there's a different term that you prefer, we can talk about.
Craig, so looking at the, this, this big change that we're all experiencing together, would it make sense to have the first agreement to be maybe just a little shorter? And then, and then as we, as, as this is a little tri-cake, then we can make it the 10 years, whatever we, we know, whatever we agree on. But it seems like after a year, maybe two at the max, we ought to at least, whether it's in the agreement or not, really look at this to see how this, how this went the first, the first go around.
We'd want to probably talk about that, I guess, with your team and our team. We would be a little nervous if in a year, all of a sudden, we have, we don't have access to your, to the fields.
Right, right, I understand that, makes sense.
What about, you know, a longer term, but different points along the way where we would assess costs to, you know, cost for maintenance of the field? You know, what, what truly the wear and the use is, is impacting the fields? And if we're experiencing greater maintenance because of it? The other question I had is, you know, over at Mill Creek Junior High for the soccer field there, from the days way back when, when, when I was playing, there was not the building where you kind of store the equipment and stuff for practice. That building now exists. I'm imagining if you've got, if you've got significant teams coming and going with their goals that are coming on and off the field and stuff like that, you may want a storage place. And, and I don't know that we would want to necessarily fund a, a storage building. And then I'm assuming we may, you may want use of, some enhanced use of restrooms, you know, locker room-ish type capacity. So I, I feel like those would, maybe a, a term that allows us to explore the costs of the wear of the field at different intervals and reassess just so that we can adjust the formula maybe there. And then I think for future discussion points, Gary, you know, what, what about bathrooms as semi locker room facilities? And what about storage building?
Certainly, if, if we're proposing or want to add facilities that pertain to our team, that would be our cost. And we place it where it fits with your site. I don't anticipate locker rooms because the kids will get on the bus and go back to their school when the game's over. Restrooms, certainly, and that would be something that would benefit, you know, everybody who uses that facility. But if we were to put a storage shed there and we, you know, got agreement from the city where to put that, that would be at our expense.
Yeah, it might be appropriate, for example, on that point to, when we go through the design process, because we're certainly going to build restrooms anyway and storage, that, you know, at that point, maybe we look together at, whether we upside the facility for your use. I think that would be the right time to do it upfront. But the idea of a look back is definitely easy. Say, so you're suggesting maybe something like the 10-year term that the school district wants, but we, we do maybe a two-year, a five-year, and a seven-year sort of reassessment? I mean, I think that's, I think that's a great idea.
I think the difficulty with all of this is that unless you have Kevin Eubank on your board, you have no guarantee of what a spring looks like. We've had these spring like last year where it was pretty dry and our golf course, you could play from the first of March and you could play on. And the year before, you could play golf on the golf course for till really about the first of May because it was so wet. And there's some things we understand that are just unpredictable. We can say, hey, we want this or we want that. But fact is, there's, there's factors in there that none of us can control.
One of the conversations we had after our last meeting, our meeting after the meeting, was with Brock and Lloyd, was based on the demand that we're seeing on, would, would the use of, would, would the, would the use that they're anticipating still be able to accommodate the growth that we're seeing? And, and I think the answer was yes, that we feel like, from our perspective, that the, the requests that are being made for our fields in that time of year, that there's capacity to do what the school district is asking for and for what we're, the community's asking for. Which is helpful to know. I mean, if that wasn't the case, we, we'd be a lot more concerned.
We're probably nearing the end of the, our period of time to discuss this. Richard, you, do you have some thoughts on what Gary proposed? Or suggested as the, are we comfortable with what has been basically outlined before we got here?
Very comfortable.
Thanks. And, Kenla?
Yes.
And?
Yes, my question is answered, I appreciate that.
Okay, thanks, Kate.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so we'll be in touch really soon and I guess look at, look at a draft and hear what other thoughts you have from the board and from the school board, so. Thanks.
We know you're busy, thanks for taking an evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
To come and do this, we really do appreciate it.
Thanks a million, I appreciate you, appreciate your time. I think that would go.
Nice, good questions too, by the way, from the council. All of those good questions. Bye now.
Yeah, we can leave it right there and we'll move it before the regular meeting. Thanks, Craig.
Good. So next item, let's see if that's, well, Gary, you get two up in a row here. You assigned yourself for two things.
I did, I did assign myself. It's because, it's because Keaton Jones, our intern for the spring, has worked tonight, or else he'd probably be doing this. But I appreciate, Keaton was, he may be listening. I don't know if he can listen or not while he was working. He was going to see if he could, but. Is he on the Zoom? Hello, Keaton. Appreciate him doing all of the, all of the research here for us. So Chris has asked with the upcoming completion of our city hall about the possibility of putting In God We Trust someplace in the council chambers. He, I think, very wisely asked too, you know, what, what are we seeing in the communities around us? What's common? And, and so I had Keaton reach out to each of the cities and talk to either their recorder or city manager about what we're seeing in our neighboring communities. And that's included in the staff report. As far as our neighbors are concerned in Davis County, none of them have anything like that in their council chambers. A few have patriotic themed, you know, pictures and things outside their council chambers. And as far as we know, in the area, only Davis County Commission chambers have the, the slogan In God We Trust, the motto. Well, I, I took some pictures as well of our council chambers for those that haven't seen them recently, what they're going to look like. And let's see if we can bring those up, if you don't mind, Francisco. And the pictures don't, don't do a great deal of justice, but the location of the wording in the council chambers, I think, is, is a good question if you choose that you want to do this. This is.
Nice, I like the latter.
Yeah, I put that in especially to just provide scale. Thanks, that's better. So yeah, this one's a little darker. So that's looking at the front, that was picture today. It, it might be difficult to tell, but the, the dais, the dais, however you pronounce it, in front is, is curved. And the millwork was, was not really designed to have anything applied to it. If you look at the county's dais, it's flat and it's, so it's not curved. It also doesn't have that kind of millwork. But a possible location that would work in the front would be above the windows. And then if you look at the next picture, if you don't mind, Miranda, which is looking the other direction, there's quite a bit more space the other direction. And same thing, you could put it above the exit and entrance or something to the right if you chose. Those would probably be the most likely locations for some wording. But with that, counsel, just turn it over to you and happy to answer any questions you might have.
Gary, can I, mayor, can I bring up how I brought it up?
Sure.
When I was running for city council, I, I looked up the, the life of Peregrin Sessions and read part of his journal. And his journal said, if I can get this right, "I trusted God to bring me to this city," or to this area. So he put "trusting God" to bring him to this city. We are the second oldest city in the state of Utah. We have the oldest cemetery. And I do think that the individuals that came here were brought here in trusting with God. On page five, you'll see in the latent on the wall, George Washington crossing the Delaware. I went back and read his prayer. And he asked God to help him as he went forward crossing the Delaware. So I think there's enough incidents that we want to put our trust in God. And I think we need to have it displayed in an appropriate area in our city council room so that it's always a reminder to us that we do put our trust in God. I can make one other little quick comment.
Please.
I've had a number of folks that have gone online and saw this and have called me and texted me and said, "I really love having In God We Trust in our city office." But I've had all kinds of phone calls. And I went back yesterday and looked up my grandfather's journal. My grandfather left Denmark at the age of 12, he was an orphan. And in his journal, he said, "I put my trust in God and I ended up in Utah." 12 years old. I can't tell you the whole story how I got here, but he was the mayor of Brigham City and a number of the buildings of Brigham City he designed and built. And he ended that with, "I put my trust in God." So I think we need to honor those people. And I think we need to have this in a significant place where it can remind us that we do need to put our trust in God.
Thank you. Kenla?
So as I was thinking about this today, I know that a number of you have gotten emails or calls about this. And I, I talked to Senator Wyler because he proposed the license plate that says, "In God We Trust." And he said that, this is just what he said about that. And he said it's been received very, very well. Several courts have addressed the use of In God We Trust motto in non-education environments. And all have said it serves a secular purpose and its use does not violate the Constitution. The phrase is so widely used that it's lost its religious significance. Specifically, the 10th Circuit Court of Appeals, which has jurisdiction over Utah, has stated that printing In God We Trust on money does not violate our Constitution. Similarly, a district court in Kansas has stated that posting the motto in county government offices does not violate the Constitution. So there was a precedence there. And I think that even for people who are not religious per se, I think that they can, they understand the fact that people that are making decisions for their communities are trying to recognize that there is a higher power, whatever that belief may be, so that those people that are in leadership roles are, are, can look to a higher power in, when they're making decisions. And so I, when I looked, I went today to look at city hall to just try to determine what a good location may be if we were to include those words. And as I looked toward the dais, I didn't really feel like there was a good place as I'm looking toward the dais. I, even though I don't, I don't mind the, I, I think that it's a, I don't mind having it, the words there. I didn't think that it would look good like across the dais, like the county has it. But I think that, I think that it's an appropriate thing. And if we can just, like, maybe today, we don't have to identify exactly where, but maybe we can see if the council feels supportive of the idea of just having it somewhere in a place that we can, you know, then, then maybe we can start with that tonight of, of knowing if, if the council's in agreement with that. And then we can decide if that, then maybe where we could talk about.
I'll just, Millie asked me if I would express her, her feelings about it. Of course, she, she did tours of the White House for several years. She feels really strongly about In God We Trust. She said it's basically, pretty much a quote, "If it's good enough for our capital, national capital, if it's good enough to be on our money, it's good enough to be in our council." In our, in an, as she said, "in a prominent place." So that's, that was her opinion. Richard?
So as for the license plates, I, I have an In God We Trust license plate on my car, but that's a personal statement.
Oh, you do?
I do. That's a personal statement. I don't know that we want to begin now after 160 years of Bountiful being in business, putting something prominently in our council chambers that's going to offend some of our residents. Certainly, there's, there is sentiment that I completely agree with. I think that it might be appropriate in a, in a cluster of hangings of founding documents or historical documents, that sort of thing. I, I really think that the county's display is garish and out of place. And this is coming from the most Peter priesthood guy sitting on the council at this time. So, anyway, I, I, I just don't think that there's a reason for us to be in your face about In God We Trust. I love the stories of how people relied on God. Maybe a quote from Peregrin Sessions in that founding documents cluster is a great way to honor that. But I just don't think that having a big display in the, in the council chambers that says In God We Trust, when there are many in our city who don't, is the right way to have Bountiful residents. many in our city who don't, is the right way to have Bountiful residents all feel like it's their house and they can be comfortable there.
Thank you. Kate?
I tend to agree with with Richard's comments. You know, I think I don't think the dais, the way it's designed with the wood paneling lends itself in any way to putting any phrase of any kind on that woodwork. And I think putting something above it, especially where it would be above, implies something that would create, I think, a distance between us and the people we are representing that and the people that would come to testify by having that phrase sit above us. And so I would I would resist that. I think, you know, some somewhere in the building, whether it's in the council chamber or somewhere else, a collection of founding documents to me seems incredibly appropriate. The Constitution, the Bill of Rights, Constitution of State of Utah, perhaps, you know, letters from our our founders feels appropriate. You know, there I spend a lot of time, of course, up at the state Capitol and in the House Chamber, what sits above the House Chamber is vox populi, you know, Latin phrase for the people's house. And I feel like that phrase is is very inclusive. We're not drawing any lines on anyone's religious beliefs or lack of religious beliefs. And so if I were if I were picking a phrase, especially one that I think has become meaningful to me, given the, you know, the events of early January, I'd probably pick, you know, e pluribus unum out of many one, you know, that we are one community. So I think there's I think in picking a phrase that would stand alone, there are a lot of wonderful phrases we have in our history and our community. And so I'd be I'd be much more comfortable with some collection of founding documents. And then if we were going to really display something inside the chamber, quite frankly, I'd love to see Bountiful artwork hanging on the on the side walls. I think anything in the front of the dais is distracting to the work we're probably doing, given the way we've added the window and the nice woodwork. But on the sides of it, I quite frankly, would love to see us putting in Bountiful art to give the the chamber rootedness with with scenes from our community and perhaps a display of founding documents on the area as you come into the doors or something like that, to me, would feel more appropriate.
Mayor, can I say one other thing? I'm sorry.
Please.
The I think that it's instructive, at least to me, that we've never had it and we're a pretty darn Mormon community. And most of the cities in Davis County don't have anything. None of them have a phrase that's as blatantly religious a statement as that. And that's in their city halls even, not necessarily just the council chambers.
So, okay. Well, we don't vote tonight, but we give direction tonight. So the numbers do count and 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 my my opinion does count tonight. I I agree with almost everything that's said as far as concerns. I think that it's less of a concern and will be less of a concern to have In God We Trust than it will be for some people to look up at us and see the temple in the background. I would say that that's more of a religious symbol than In God We Trust. So I really don't see that as a problem. I wouldn't put it up on the dais. I wouldn't put it inside. I'd put it I when you show me that room, I think that when you're looking at the back and over there on the right hand side, and for some reason, my mind, I I see something round more like the more like the emblem emblematic that they have in the Capitol Building, rather than just great big words that just say that. I think it'd be nice if it had, you know, if it had something else with it and maybe round. But yeah, I I think I think it says that there's that there's some some power that's higher than the six people that sit at the bench. So I'm definitely for it.
So I guess a question, a little bit, yeah.
Would everybody be comfortable with it being included in a wall of founding documents, historical documents?
With other things, you mean?
Yeah.
Like I would I would be.
Outside.
I think we'd be.
Someplace appropriate.
Some of the places that I know, some of the city halls, they have, it might be even Centerville that just has several of those, Richard.
They do.
Right then. I think that would be totally appropriate. I mean, my opinion, I would I certainly would be comfortable with that.
I think so. I'm looking at our our generous landlord, the fire department, and they have some vinyl letters on the on the wall behind us. If we were thinking, if you were thinking something like that, where we're where there's like documents, but then like some vinyl letters, I don't I don't know that that seems like that's the right fit. You don't have me saying, I mean, if you look if you look just behind you, we got some pictures of the fire department and then like some vinyl letters. So.
It's got to be different than this.
Okay.
Yeah.
I was just.
This has got to look this the people who designed the building also will help us design what this would look like.
That's what I was. Yeah, that's what I was going to propose.
Do we let the designers kind of figure out maybe two or three of those founding documents that both you and Richard talked about and some in some way incorporate In God We Trust? That I think that's significant. So I'm for that. I think maybe that's a I think that's a good idea. But I think they can design it, Kate. I think they'll put it in a it's not going to look like this.
I mean, no offense to the fire department.
No, no, no. But the fire department, they're not worried, you know, they're they're not worried about this. The only time this place has ever been filled is when we when we raised the taxes. So.
You know, that was something that I thought too, when I was looking at some of these pictures, is I think that in addition to what it says, we want it to look appropriate. We want it to to be fitting with what with what the building looks like. And so I think the design is definitely a consideration and I definitely don't think we should try to solve that tonight.
You mean, you don't want the Bountiful Council Chamber presented by AT&amp;T?
Well, Richard, Chris, Kembleon and Kate, you know, when you look at over there, if you can see it far enough, is that you could tell there was quite a bit more room over there on that right hand side. I'm not sure we couldn't use a little bit of the left hand side for the stuff you're talking about too. But but it seems like a good spot. People see it when they're leaving. And I do you have any thoughts about that?
So I think this would be my suggestion. I the direction I'm hearing is something using our professionals that helped design the building and had an aesthetic, find a location that's appropriate that can include that motto along with some founding documents. And find and find a location that's appropriate in in the room. It might be worthwhile to live in it for a couple of meetings.
Yeah, that's another thing I forgot to say. Let's be there for a little bit.
I think that's a good idea. And the other thing is, I don't think I know that I'm not tied that it has to be in that room. I mean, I it has to be in city hall, but maybe there's a better place on the other side of the wall or something. I mean, I'm not, I just, I think we got you have direction.
Yeah.
Do you?
Yeah. Well, I mean, which is to me right now, which is, okay, we'll bring it up with the designers, get their ideas. But I think once you guys sort of move in, and our first meeting would hopefully be the 23rd of February.
Yeah.
And that's our plan.
Are we going to have food? We're going to have something?
No, no food in that that room.
We can't eat in that room.
What? Beautiful room.
This is a reception center.
You're gonna have to take your shoes off just to go in there.
Let's take a couple of minutes and then we'll we'll start.
One more comment?
Please.
I would like us to have a very subdued toned Bountiful City logo somewhere in that room. And we've gotten a little criticism for how many Bountiful logos we have over at the town square. So I'm not saying we need one on every, you know, every six feet along the wall, but maybe one in the room. So let's think about that too.
No, I think that's fine. Have we got criticisms for what we have around there?
Oh, yeah, there was some there's some social media posts about how many signs we've got.